Second, 2014 Lincoln City Urban Renewal Agency Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Roger Sprague.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Gordon Agleton.
Here.
Gary Ellingson. Excuse me. Chester Norikas.
Here.
Wes Ryan.
Here.
And Henry Quant.
Here.
Let's see, our next item on the agenda is comments from citizens present, other than those who are going to be representing later on. Is there anyone there that wants to speak to us? Seeing none, let's go on to Item D, which is minutes of a meeting which will not be available at this meeting. That was the meeting of December 8th. We'll get those probably next meeting. So, now we're on to Special Order of Business and Presentations. First one is Economic Development Downtown Manager Proposal. Allison.
Good evening. So I'll go over a little bit of background on this. Following the 2009 substantial amendment to the Urban Renewal Year 2000 Development Plan, in which economic development was added as a project category to the plan, staff began a series of steps to assess the local need and to develop options for the agency to consider. Up until that point, the agency was limited in the types of economic development activities that it was able to support. A number of meetings were held locally with business owners and Small Business Development Center to discuss what types of programs might be most helpful in the community, and meetings with regional economic development professionals assisted in compiling a majority of the options that were in that draft toolbox. As the list of options was collected, staff once again went back to the business community for feedback. We used a survey of Chamber of Commerce and Bay Area Merchants Association membership and got responses to a number of questions relating to those options that were gathered. Twenty-two economic development options were first presented at the agency meeting on August 13, 2012. This list included options that are currently being used in other communities and/or suggestions from within our community to be reviewed periodically for implementation. At that time, the agency chose to add three of the options to the existing facade improvement program available to businesses and properties within the Urban Renewal District. So the current economic development toolbox, which is all available online, you can see what programs we have and download the applications. We have the facade improvement loan program, business expansion loan, energy efficiency loan, and program support. At the December 8th Urban Renewal Meeting, the agency moved the downtown manager tool from the list of economic development options to the toolbox and directed staff to bring back program criteria. Program development can typically happen in a couple of ways. Staff can set the criteria and detailed program requirements along with agency directives and then see if those in the Urban Renewal District find the tool worth taking advantage of, and that what we would call top-down program development, where we develop the tool and then we see what the interest or demand is. And then, in this case, an organization operating in the district became aware of the option and submitted a draft proposal for consideration to use the tool. Staff believes this approach to developing the tool, which would be called bottom-up, coming from the community up to us, demonstrates a need and interest from the community and can be a more direct approach to implementing the downtown manager tool. BAMA's draft proposal was provided to staff and last July, the Urban Renewal Loan Grant Economic Development Committee, we're kind of combining all these things into one committee. We usually refer to it as the Loan Committee, but it's, we do have some grants available and we are talking about economic development, so slowly we'll be calling this mostly the Economic Development Committee. This committee met to visit with BAMA about their proposal and just their idea of how to have a downtown manager. Other meetings have been had since then, including Chamber of Commerce leadership, and there have been opportunities for BAMA to respond to thoughts and questions from everyone. And also, a workshop presentation allowed agency members to ask questions of the retired former McMinnville Downtown Manager, Alex Ward, BAMA President, is here to answer any questions this evening. And the final BAMA proposal is in your meeting packet as Exhibit A, and it's based upon the description of the agency tool. And that tool, I'll just go over the highlights of that tool real briefly. To fund a downtown manager position for a two-year pilot project, a downtown manager would work closely with established merchant associations, businesses in the other historic business districts, the Visitor and Convention Bureau, regional economic development agencies, and the Urban Renewal Agency. The activities of a downtown manager might include establishing and organizing shared objectives between the various areas of town, foster positive relationships as a liaison between businesses, property owners, and city departments. They may market available storefronts, improve the visual impact of the business districts, coordinate district events with business activities. And program success would demonstrate to area businesses the benefits they would realize, and they would then be given the opportunity to create a business improvement district or a bid, and that could fund such a position in the future. So that is kind of a long synopsis, but we wanted to make sure we covered all the history and how we got to where we are today. And if you have any questions of Alex about their proposal?
Yes, Chair. I'm not specifically zeroing in on you, Alex, at this particular moment. A number of years ago, the Planning Commission, or I mean, the City Council looked at, okay, back it up, the Urban Renewal Agency looked at the downtown manager thing. As a matter of fact, went to McMinnville and spent some time with the person that was in charge there. We were all pretty excited about it, and we came back, and at that time, there didn't seem to be a whole lot of reception by the various groups, business groups through town. And I'm curious as to how that may or may not have changed, because I like the concept, but unless we can get the Ocean Lake area and the Nell Scott area and BAMA all tied in with this individual or this position, you know, that's, and then whatever other areas, I don't see it being any more viable than it was then, and I want it to be viable, don't get me wrong. I think it's a good idea, it's just that it was extremely lukewarm reception to the concept before, and I guess my question is, what's changed and do we have, like, for instance, the Ocean Lake merchants were just absolutely not interested, and I think that was an important component, that we really felt that we needed them on board too. I mean, Kurt knows, I mean, he was there, but I mean, I'm just kind of throwing that out, because I think it's a good concept, but, you know, has the situation changed where these three main merchants groups have decided to actually cooperate and want to work together to create something, or are we still, well, I don't know?
Well, I can only really speak for BAMA, obviously. I can tell you for sure that BAMA has changed since the last time this came up with any We restarted BAMA, or sort of rebooted BAMA, in 2009 during the dark days of the Great Recession, and we had a lot of time to kill. And we actually started as a, we wanted to call it the Taft Merchant Group, because, you know, BAMA had its own history and we wanted to kind of start fresh, and, you know, as we walked around and started to try to organize people, we really saw a need and desire for it, and BAMA had the infrastructure, so we just sort of took it over. I think at our first meet and greet, we had, you know, 50 or 60 members, but BAMA before then, and I'd have been attending meetings, had sort of waned to just a few people that were active. You know, since, you know, we started to sort of reinvigorate it, you know, we've seen interest really skyrocket. And so, again, I can't speak for Ocean Lake Merchant Association, I can, I'll say just candidly that merchants associations kind of live and die based on, you know, how much people participate in them, and often there's a few people that really drive things, and frankly, that's, you know, something that we're hoping that the downtown manager can help facilitate when you have a leadership that cycles out. It's not on just on one person's shoulders, you know, there's somebody that's a constant, much like the City Council has the, you know, City Manager. It doesn't matter kind of who's coming and going, you've got, you know, you have a sort of central nervous system that can still keep it together. You know, all that BAMA needed when it was down to just a couple of people was someone walking up and down 101 saying, "Hey, you want to do this," and everybody jumped on it. It was not a tough sell. So, having sort of a constant entity to keep the cohesiveness together is part of the reason why we're excited about it, amongst other things. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, it does to a cer, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I forgot to address you. It does to a certain degree. I am delighted with BAMA's resurgence and the events that you're putting on. I guess my concern is still, you know, the Nell Scott merchants, which is a small group, but they're pretty cohesive when they want to be. And then, the Ocean Lake group, which had a pretty strong following and it just kind of fell apart, and I'm concerned that we not hire a downtown manager for the Taft area and BAMA only, if the other people are not going to participate. And I think part of this stuff is that we have to start thinking of the whole town, I mean, I like the various nodes, if you will, shopping nodes, have their own identity. That's not what I'm talking about, but we have to have something that ties them together so that people want to go to the Nell Scott area, or want to go to the Ocean Lake area, or want to go to the Taft area, or, so, and I think that's what the downtown manager position could do.
Sure.
If they're going to get the cooperation. And that's, the only part that concerns me about this whole thing is, you know, do we have any kind of commitment? I know we have from BAMA, but do we have any kind of commitment at all or interest from Ocean Lake and Nell Scott?
Well, Nell Scott actually is part of the BAMA group.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, there's the Nell Scott Neighborhood Association, that Judy Casper heads up that is reasonably active and is sort of an associate group to BAMA. BAMA is Nell Scott Taft, Cutler City.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so we represent, you know, a large portion, and Ocean Lake merchants, you know, there's, when you talk about cooperation, you know, we certainly have never had any type of, I hope that doesn't sound like we have any type of uncooperation, there's never been any type of rivalry or anything like that. It's always been, we've always been very amiable, never any tension, and frankly, the idea of some sort of, you know, cross event, just has never really come up. You know, we tend to sort of promote our own areas, and when you're, you know, when your merchant group is led up by business owners of that area, you know, you get focused in on, you know, you and your neighbors. You know, I'd love to do something that, you know, crossed over into OMA territory. It has been a little while since I've been to a meeting, I'm not sure if they're still holding regular meetings right now.
I'm not aware that they are, but...
Okay, yeah. And that's another case of where, you know, you have, you know, a couple of people that are really driving the group, and, you know, if they retire or if they, you know, decide to step down, then sometimes the group can lose its cohesiveness. With the number of members that we have, you know, we're excited about the idea of having somebody that can just really sort of be that electron that sort of, you know, keeps those bonds together, and we're hoping that this person's that, is that thing.
Okay, other comments?
Alex, you've had meetings with the Chamber of Commerce Leadership. What kind of response did you get from them?
You know, I don't think that there was any negative response. I didn't personally have meetings with them. I know that it's come up and has been discussed with them, but I didn't have, there wasn't any pushback, for sure.
They were supportive in general of just anything that would promote the city, so...
And who would you imagine Alex recruiting potential manager?
Who would I manage, imagine doing the recruiting?
Yeah.
Oh, the BAMA leadership, for sure. Yeah, we have several officers, and, you know, we're, the idea is to have a bit of a panel to do that, and Dave Price has requested to be on that panel just because that person would work in his office, and so he'd like to be able to have some input on that.
And in the job description, you mentioned the Lincoln City Lodging Association. Is there such an organization?
Not yet. We're getting there.
You're getting there how? What, what, what stage is that?
Well, it's trying to get everybody together, trying to do the organizational piece of it. That's something that Kip Ward is actually spearheading.
And can you tell me about Barrett Business Services and how we arrived to recruit their services?
Sure. Actually, the Oregon Coast Community College has had experience, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct, Dave? With, working with Barrett.
And they're in town, are they?
They're in Newport.
In Newport?
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, the problem with hiring sort of a one-off employee, as employers here will know, is that there's an awful lot of backend work between taxes and the like, trying to handle that. And actually, when this idea was being floated just within the BAMA membership, that was a real big sticking point, was how we were going to handle that. You know, it's easy to say, "Hey, let's hire somebody," but, you know, who's going to take care of all that stuff? And at a 30% fee, I know what I pay my accountant to handle all this stuff for my employees, it's actually a pretty good deal. You know, I usually round up to the nearest, next $10 when I'm trying to figure out the general backend for the taxes and stuff like that for my employees, and so I was pleased to see that their fee was so reasonable. So, they handle all that stuff that doesn't sound too bad, but if you don't do, it turns out you get into a little bit of trouble, so...
Thank you.
You bet.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I guess, looking at this, and the title may be a bit of a misnomer, Downtown Business Manager, and I think for Counselor Ryan, as I read the write-up, I didn't view it to be a citywide working effort. Is that correct? It's focused on the BAMA trade area.
Absolutely, yes.
So, as much as I agree also, Mr. Ryan, with your dream of citywide, this one isn't it, but then I would remind us all that in the write-up, it's a pilot, and I viewed that as if this works, smaller area, smaller focus, limited two-year, if it works, then others ought to be interested in it, the other parts of the business districts, and so it'd be perhaps a good model. So I was kind of going down my list, you know, we've passed the recession, we're into recovery and actually into much better times. We finally put, not finally, but we have a nice set of economic tools in our toolkit through Urban Renewal, and then we've added this, this being someone to focus on getting the tools used as well as talking to the businesses and the property owners, which quite frankly, we've heard as an agency and council quite often, where's the economic development? Who's working it? And I see this as one of those pieces that would be, you could point to it now. And then finally, the test that, which I go through, is how will we know that it works? And I think the answer is in two years, because that's all this funding would allow, is two years. If the businesses in that trade area agree to tax themselves, what could be a better test than, you know, they saw value in it? Because it really doesn't matter whether I see value or not, it's if the businesses are willing to tax themselves to keep it going. And I think that's what I heard most prominent from the McMinnville work session, was they tax themselves to do all the kind of things you're talking about. So I would be in support of this, because it's been a lot of discussion. I think we've heard the cries for, we have the, I don't think it's been, if we'd done this any earlier, we, the success may not have been as readily available, because we've got the tools in the toolkit first and foremost, and the economy is recovering drastically, so I think, I think it's a great time to push the pilot. And that's what it is. It's not a future career at this point, at least through Urban Renewal, it's a pilot.
Other comments or questions? I too looked at this as primarily a BAMA-located program rather than citywide, and I agree with Mr. Anderson that if this is as successful as we would hope that it would be, then it would spread to other parts of the community.
That's certainly our vision of it, absolutely.
Okay. Anything else that you'd like to present?
I think that's it.
Did Mr. Price have anything he wanted to say? Apparently not. He is here for backup. Okay, do we need to take action on this this evening, or do we do that later?
If you would like to take action now, or if you have more discussion or any questions?
I'd make a motion now, Mr. Chairman, to approve, approve, for this agency to approve the BAMA proposal to fund a downtown manager as a two-year pilot project in the amount of $28,000 per year, as the agency budget allows.
I second that.
There's a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, guys.
We will have a downtown manager in the Taft area.
You bet.
It's my...
We need a roll call vote.
Probably do a roll call.
Pardon me, it's a roll call.
Okay.
I was thinking that that was grant stuff.
Can I ask, are you intending that this be written up into some kind of a contract, or what's your pleasure on this? We're just using the grant agreement or using the proposal as the contract? See, the proposal to me is the scope of the services of the contract, but...
And could, well, could we modify that motion then to have attorney work with Urban Renewal staff to get whatever's appropriate? I see this as a funding source is going to, but you have, I'd look to staff.
We do have another grant program that we administer currently, so it would, in our eyes, it would work similarly to that, but we can check with the city attorney and make sure that that will work.
I was just looking for how to finish it up, and if we need an agreement, then we should just include that in the motion.
Let me amend that motion then, to work, if staff would work with city attorney to modify any of our grant programs, the contract with our grant programs to fit this use.
I'll modify my second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Agleton?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Norikas?
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Ryan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is the update on the business gap analysis.
All right. Over the course of many years and numerous meetings, the subject of business recruitment and/or business expansion has been discussed, and usually, the lack of current data prevents decisions from being made. Subjective information is shared amongst the group with varying degrees of supportive facts. The need for reliable analysis of businesses in Lincoln City would be helpful to move discussions and strategic planning forward. In conjunction with our economic development partners, the Chamber of Commerce, the Small Business Development Center, Lincoln County Economic Development Alliance, the agency issued a request for qualifications, or an RFQ, to commission a citywide business gap analysis. The scope of work includes input and participation from a variety of local stakeholders and interested public. The business gap analysis will identify which employment sectors in Lincoln City are lacking or weak, and the resulting document would be used as a tool for our economic development partners, as well as agency decisions, and provide specific information and direction for business expansion opportunities and perhaps business recruitment. The request for qualifications was advertised in November, and we received two responses that are currently being evaluated. Staff will negotiate a refined scope and contract to complete the business gap analysis, and then we'll bring that contract back before you for consideration. We just wanted to give you an update on that process.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Allison, I guess what I, this explanation helped, I guess what I'm missing, and maybe I'm not reading into it, but I would go out on a limb and betting that all our business districts are lacking and weak, and so even I could come up with that one. I'm hoping the data in it, so this is kind of the, quite buried in here is the question, is there, is there going to be recommendations or observations of what's missing in a, in a community such as ours as far as businesses? You know, that we've gotten used to not having and need somebody to tell us?
Yes, and that will be looked at from the tourism perspective, as well as the local year-round resident.
Right. So then, we should end up with, you know, a lot of stuff to, that we could work on, but also some potential business types to maybe recruit or find to come in.
Yes.
Great, that, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Okay, do you need an approval for us to go ahead with that? We've already got that in motion.
Just an update.
Okay, let's go on to the next item, neighborhood signs.
To help with community wayfinding, which is an important component of economic development, signs listing the neighborhoods or districts of Lincoln City were placed near the entrances of the six historic business districts, or commercial districts, or pearls, along the highway. And those are Wacomah, Ocean Lake, D-Lake, Nell Scott, Taft, and Cutler City. And often, visitors do not realize that we're a seven-mile-long town and we have all these various parts to explore. With the annexation of the Rhodes End community, there have been some requests to have a similar Rhodes End signed for better recognition and continued efforts at wayfinding for our visitors. However, since Rhodes End is a residential community, the purpose of these historic business district signs would not be as well-suited off the Highway 101 corridor. Also, it should be noted that the majority of Rhodes End, including Logan Road, which is, of course, the main way in and out, is not located in the Urban Renewal District. So we wanted to just let you know that we have had some requests about signage, and those are just some bits of information for you to hear, and also wanted to let you know that the Visitors and Convention Bureau is in the process of designing and installing some district banners for Rhodes End, and that will match or coordinate with the banners that are put up in other parts of the town. So they'll have some consistency that way, but in terms of the highway business district signs, we're just not sure that that would be the right approach for Rhodes End, so...
Questions, comments? I have one. It seems to me that those signs are hard to read. Maybe it's because they faded, but I saw one just the other day and I had to look twice just to read it, because it was not distinct enough. Maybe, maybe they need to be retouched and...
We can, we can take a look at that. The, the way that they're designed, they're, they're meant to really just highlight the place that you're in. So the, the white font is, you know, there's a picture here up in the PowerPoint, but this one for Cutler City, so Cutler City is really supposed to pop out at you more than the other parts of the neighborhoods, which, you know, they are, there's less contrast in the words on those other parts of the sign, but for each part of town, that's the one that's highlighted. So, you're right, it's a lot of information to convey.
Well, and they're very faded and weather beaten, I think, is probably the answer.
Okay, all right, we'll take a look at that.
I think that's worthwhile. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I guess I'm wondering if, since this is just for discussion, and Gordy, I think you're the one that brought up the, on behalf of Rhodes End or that issue, but looking at this sign, quite frankly, I've always questioned why we have it. I understand what it says and the idea of highlighting, but on other occasions, we have a lot of discussion about sign litter, too much signs, and to me, this just adds to it. I think Counselor Ryan brought up a good point, you know, they... You know, we are one town, coming up with our 50th anniversary soon, year. And, and as I drive through town, I think VCB has put up the banners, which are nice. I don't know what the cost is when those get faded or torn to replace, but I'm, you know, similar. But I'm just wondering if we still need this kind of signage at all? Because, and think more about trying to remind people that it's one city. I like the district, I like the shopping district, banners can do that. You know, they're kind of hard to miss where the districts are anyway. But for the future, I think this ought to be on the table. Because I can see Rhodes End's point, and yet the counterargument, as Allison has made, gee, they're not in the urban, urban renewal area. These are business districts, Rhodes End are residential, all good sense. But there's still, this, this adds to me a bit of the, you know, Johnny come lately aspect of how do we become inclusive of areas? So I just throw it out for food for thought.
Other comments?
Mr. Chair, I, I tend to agree with, I mean, I understand the importance of identifying a district. This almost reminds me that I'm now driving into another town as opposed to a different district. And that's been my, the thing that's been bugging me about these signs all along is that it always seems like you're, you're driving into another little community as opposed to one big community and these are just different districts, like in Portland, there's, you know, Hollywood and so on and so forth. And, you know, you drive through Portland, it's, it's, it's not a strip city, but, you know, but I think it's important that there is some sort of identification of, of the community and that's fine. But I, these signs have always kind of bugged me because it just looks like I'm going from one, one little town to another little town to another little town to another little town. And they all kind of run together and it, and then people go, well, what's Lincoln City? And we do get that at motels, is, well, where's, are you outside of Lincoln City? They don't get that it's the Taft area, the Nelscott area, it's, they think it's a different town. Just food for thought. But I, I agree with the mayor on that.
Other comments? Okay, let's go on to the last one, open space maintenance activities.
So I just have a couple items on the menu here for open space update and no action is required for any of them. The first one is ongoing maintenance in the open spaces. In December, we had wonderful days of volunteers out in Cutler City wetlands and removing invasive species and general trail maintenance that we've been doing all along. In Agnes Creek and Friends of the Wildwood, there's upcoming days scheduled for January. We're staying with the, generally every Saturday or every other Saturday, depending on, through the holidays, it's been every other Saturday, there's Volunteer Day. And January 10th is the next one at 10:00 a.m. That's at Friends of the Wildwood. And January 24th at 10:00 a.m., there's one in Agnes Creek in the north side. Details can be found on, on those, on the city's website and on the Blogspot, which has been mentioned here before. I can, I can mention it again. It's lincolncityopenspaces.blogspot.com. And Conservation Corps groups have contributed the majority of the days in the last month of Volunteer Days. I was out on medical leave, so. As well as Tony Lewis and the Street Crews contributed multiple open space days. They had county, county work crews out in multiple spots, so. The next item on there is the Ford Family Foundation and they are part of the Rural Development Initiative. They're based out of Roseburg, Oregon and Eugene. Most of the people that we've been dealing with are out of Eugene. And the Rural Development Initiative, the Western Oregon branch chose urban renewal and Agnes Creek open space specifically as the winner of their leadership group grant. And what that is, is they have a consortium of community leaders that get together and go through a whole training process and pick a project, and we were out of 30-plus projects to win it. And basically, the grant comes in, the Ford Family Foundation matches up to $5,000, so $10,000 total. The group raises the other 5,000 and it's to do just a community improvement project. And so they haven't decided what they want to do in Agnes, but they know all the, the open space bylaws, if you will, and, and know that it's limited to ecologically low impact. So there's a total of 30-plus members in that group and they've already begun, members of the group have begun volunteering for the open space program, so that's pretty good.
Ian, excuse me. Is that the north side of Agnes Creek or the south side?
They've, they've chosen the north side.
North side.
To do, to do stuff, yeah. So, is there any other questions on those first two items?
Nope, go ahead.
Okay. The final update on here is just future visitor programs. I spoke about in a couple of prior meetings about geocache events and I've just, I've begun to work on developing programs that are visitor-centric in multiple ways. And the geocache event was hugely successful, brought in lots of people from all over the place and raised awareness about the open spaces. So I'm continuing to do similar programs, but we're now going multiple directions with events. So we're going to do some more geocache events, which are, we're also going to do some CDO geocache events, which are cache-in, trash-out events. And that's where the geocachers go out and they remove debris and trash and have fun geocaching at the same time. So those are neat events. And then we're also going to do birding tours with Jack Doyle and the Audubon Group of Lincoln County. And he's got a full proposal and to me, I'll have that updated and stuff and for you guys the next time. And we're also, I'm developing a naturalist tour program to go, to coincide with Jack's program that will be non-birding, let's say. So that's it.
Wow, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I have one question, and that is what's happening with the trail up to the Knoll? Are we still working on that, improving that?
Yeah, I believe that one hasn't, we haven't done much with it because the Knoll isn't officially open space yet. I believe I'd probably have to ask my, my superior on that one, but I'm, I'm pretty sure the Knoll is not technically open space yet, so there.
I guess maybe that's right. I was thinking that, I guess I'm thinking ahead.
Yeah. I like your style.
Okay. I think the sooner we can work on the, getting that trail done, the better. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we have no public hearings, so we're down to agency member comments. Anything down this way?
Nothing. Thank you.
This way? All right, then we are adjourned.